Thank you very much, sir. Good evening, all. Welcome to a Thursday, January 21st, 2021, 6:00 PM meeting, a remote participation meeting of the Auburn's only Board of Appeals. Before we get started this evening, I have some administrative responsibility to handle. I'm going to try to move them as quickly as possible, so please be patient if I interrupt for a minute, and we'll get started as soon as we can. So, if anyone who is having difficulty logging on is going to hear this several times throughout my little speech, but if you want to call 1-646-749-3112, enter the remote access code of 944571349, or using your log-on computer, the website is GoLocoGoToGlobal, excuse me, GlobalGoToMeeting.com, and join with 944571349. So, with that being said, I'm going to read my script very quickly. As an ordinary matter, my name is Robert K. Joe. I'm the Chair of the Auburn's only Board of Appeals, and in order to reduce background noise, I'm going to have to make sure you all have your phones muted, any type of music or television in the background if you're at home, if you can kind of quiet all that stuff in the background, it's very helpful, and only unmute if you want to speak. Please to really confirm that all members of the Board have been anticipated on your agenda or present, and if you can hear me, please sound affirmatively. So, when I call your names, please respond. Vice Chair, Maron.
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Chacolo.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Well, and I hope you are also, and everybody else.
Mr. Cuffey.
I'm here, Bob.
Megan Roach.
I'm here, Mr. Cuffey.
I know Peter Jones had mentioned this, we're giving an email, so you're all aware. Just asking that if he could be deferred this evening due to a heavy workload, so if we do have to meet him, he is acceptable, but is not going to opt to participate this evening. And we have Caitlin Bush.
Yes, I'm here.
Then, you are welcome. So, officials, if you are back here, when I call your names, please respond affirmatively. Building Commissioner Caleb Moody.
Here.
Len Yusaku, Clark Gingerbuto.
Here.
Okay. Do we have anyone else that I may have missed on my script that might want to identify themselves before I move forward on the town side?
I think we're good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think we're fine. Excellent, thank you. So, good evening. This open meeting of the town of Auburn, Massachusetts, only Board of Appeals, a Thursday, January 23rd, 2021, now called the Order at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely, considering the State's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth during the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, as to such the government's order to suspend the requirement of the public open meeting law, to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, to which you can find posted with the agenda materials from this meeting on the town's website, allows public parties to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. So, this meeting, the only Board of Appeals convened by remote participation for the public only. Although some staff may be physically located in a select meeting room down hall, those employed are tactically socially distancing in accordance with the government's orders. For the public to join the meeting again, I mentioned this earlier, but please, if you've missed it, call 1-646-749-3112, and enter access code 944571349. Or, you can join by a computer by going to GoToMeeting, join 944571349. The remote access information has also been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television Network. Accordingly, those members of the only Board of Appeals, employees, and members of the public to participate, please be aware that folks may be able to see you, and please take care of the screen, share your computer, any audio broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials, all supporting materials that have been provided to members of the party are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business round rules. Okay, so we're now going to turn over to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit the rules of round rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. So, I'm going to get a drink there. Now, I, Robert K. Joe, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they come to conclude their remarks, then I'll roll around and ask each member to invite them to add comments or have questions. So, when we do that, if you can identify yourself as which member you are, have your comment, and then you can go ahead and mute your mic again. Please, I'm going to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair announces a floor to you. You say your name before speaking. As members, we should encourage, engage in discussion with other members, keep yourself with the chair, being careful identifying yourself. After members have spoken, the chair will award public comments as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak, identify themselves, so you give us your name and your address only. Once the chairs have a list of all public commenters, I will call each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken with the meeting, which is conducted by a rule called vote. If there's a technical reason if we happen to have any, we will suspend the meeting while attempts to repair are made, and keep accurate minutes, building end connection and reconnections of the members. Okay, so I got that part. Do I have a, I'm going to close that out, sorry. So, do I have a motion to open the meeting?
The Chair, Michael Maron, Vice Chair, motion to open the meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Mr. Chacolo, Mr. Cuffey, just for a quick roll call, let me know if I'm working as well. Thank you. Ms. Roach.
Open.
Mr. Maron, he's made a motion. Peter Jones is not here. Ms. Bush.
Yes, open.
Thank you so much. So, we have a pretty easy, or at least short, agenda. It appears as though we do have some discussions down the road, but let's get right to this first one. So, the 6:00 PM applicant, Serrato Signs LLC, requesting a special permit under Section 7.8 of the Auburn's only Bylaw, or a record 25-foot-high by 15'4" wide, free scamming pylon bylaw sign, on property located at 117 Rochester Street, Auburn, Matt, Matt 27, Pineville 8, is the applicant present?
Yes, this is Andy from Serrato Signs.
Great, thank you so much. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
The Chair, motion to open the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chacolo. So, we're going to assume that everybody, we have a motion to open, we're going to continue. So, Mr. Serrato, sir, if you could just explain, obviously, everybody has a copy of your application. We have all the same literature, so if you wanted to kind of go over what you've got going on there, sir, and just kind of give the Board a brief about opening up the discussion, and we'll talk if we have any remarks.
Through the Chair. Excuse me, through the Chair, just point of clarification, we need to take a vote on the motion to open.
All right, I was trying to, I was trying to, you're right, I apologize. So, okay, so we have a first and a second, so do we have a, Mr. Cuffey, how do you vote?
Open.
Thank you. Ms. Roach.
Open.
Thank you, and I vote to open. So, we'll get it done, okay.
Thank you.
So, I apologize. It's okay, I apologize, I tried to move things along, and I should have just patiently followed that. So, again, I apologize for making trouble. Mr. Serrato, if you want to go ahead and start over, sir?
No, that's fine, thank you, folks. Two months back, I was in for the same sign, same location, and the sign was approved that was put according to the height and width. What had happened, the information given to me by the landlord, showing the Planning Board approval, the drawings he gave me, actually showed the sign outside of the property line, closer to the road. Impression he had that for the Planning Board, he thought it was okay to put in that area. When I started taking my measurements of how the sign would sit and where the property line actually was, I found, I found and explained to him, and he found out as well as the property line was further back than what he understood. So, the area you have to work with to install that sign with the drainage along the wall, I don't have enough room to put the sign. So, what I'm looking for is relief of the setback to the property line from 10 feet to 2 feet. And if you scroll back up a little bit, I can probably try to explain a little bit better to you, I apologize. But that heavy black line, the line that curves, is like a half moon, the line looks straight across, the line that goes straight all the way across is the property line. So, from that line towards the road is another 20 feet. So, from his property line to the road is 20 feet, and he just doesn't have the room to fit between the wall and his property line, so it's a relief to get closer to the property line.
Okay. Is there something else to add, sir? Go ahead. The year before, the Vice Chair was Mr. Maron. Sure, do you have any questions that concern the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I was trying to figure this out quickly, Mike, but so, where in your, in your now proposal, based on the setback that you're requesting, how close will this sign be in proximity to the street?
You'll still be 20 feet away from the street.
Okay, so that, okay, so we're not crouching any further toward the street, it's just the relief on, on the property line setback that you're requesting?
Yes, sir. And I believe in your, in that paperwork, I did superimpose the sign as best I could to show you how it would sit.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm, I think, yeah, it's my fault, I didn't understand, but I just wanted to, if it's to take a look at the numbers, and I couldn't find that, but I did see it here on the, on the 20 feet. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to reserve any additional questions, but I don't have anything for right now.
Excellent, thank you so much. Mr. Chacolo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Check it out, okay. Is this the only place you can put that sign?
Yes, as you start coming back towards Auburn, the road gets, the property line gets narrow, so it's actually, as you face the property to the right-hand side, it's about 12 feet to the, to the, to the wall, and as you go over to the far left, it comes out to be about 18 feet up the wall. And again, because of the retaining wall that was installed, and drainage pipe that's put in along the wall, there isn't a safe place to put the foundation. As you see on, just, as you see on that picture, the pole was actually sitting right outside the stone. And I'm afraid to go closer, well, by, by code, I believe, go closer to those overhead power lines, I have to be 10, 15 feet away from that as well, I believe, per electrical code. So, we felt it sat best right in the middle there.
I don't mind telling you that I feel we're being forced into making a decision here because everybody didn't do their due diligence. With that, I've got a question for Caleb. If this is, if the relief is granted, because we're doing what we're doing with the property line, are we more inclined to be issuing a variance instead of a special permit?
To answer that question, the bylaw says that sign regulations can be waived per the special permit. That being said, I think the sign would constitute a structure under our bylaw's definition, and it may require a variance to decrease the setback.
What would be your opinion of how we should proceed? Permit, special permit, or variance?
I'm inclined to say that it would require a variance rather than a special permit.
Well, the paperwork would have to be amended to show that, but if we were to speak in terms of a variance, I guess, for me, if we made a stretch that because of the existing work and site work that was done, we have a problem with topology that exists now, so my feeling is that we're not going to go with a variance and the fact that, I would loosely say, the topology requirement would be met. I'm feeling that that's all we could do to bring some relief here. And that, is that the only, Mr. Serrato, is that the only style sign that you could put in to require the rest?
Yes.
I'm going to reserve any further comment until I hear everybody, okay, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely, thank you very much for bringing that up, too. I'll have the chief drill.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Cuffey, sir, you have any questions that concern the applicant?
I'm okay for now. I'm okay because we have the 20 feet from the road, so I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roach?
You know, I would agree with Mr. Cuffey that, you know, because we have the extra room, room on the road, I'm, you know, not super concerned, but I guess, a question for the applicant, you know, what about the possibility, and obviously, if it's not feasible, I'm happy to be told that it's, you know, not a possibility, but what about the sign, you know, being actually, you know, up, up above the retaining wall? Obviously, you do, you lose one or two parking spots because the sign would have to be, you know, into the concrete and, you know, raised up because it would be up above the retaining wall. But what about the possibility of, you know, putting it up a little more? Do you feel like that wouldn't give you, you know, as much view from the road? You know what, I just want to know, would there be an option to move it up there?
I don't believe that there'd be a fair place for him to put a sign, or put the edge of the sign 40-plus feet away from the edge of the road, and the traffic going downward and see it.
Okay, okay, just, I mean, I thought that might be the answer, but I just, you know, wanted to at least, to allow the suggestion. Okay, I would say I'm also all set with questions for now, then.
Thank you very much. What, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything right now, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, the only thing I would like to add, well, a couple of things, to the applicant, Mr. Serrato, so, the relief for the 2 feet to the property line is strictly because of the, I think, what we discovered where the property line was, so to speak, so in other words, the location of the sign from the original application has not changed, correct?
I'm sorry, can you ask that question again?
So, the original location of the sign, before you were seeking this relief, the original location of the sign has not changed, correct?
I would answer that as yes.
It has, the location of the sign has changed, and you put it back?
I'm sorry. On the plot plan that was approved by the Planning Board, it actually showed the sign in front of that dark black line that I showed you.
Right, okay.
And so, to answer your question, that, that plan was given to you originally, and I showed it on state property, which doesn't belong, but it was intended from the roadway.
Mm-hmm.
If that makes any sense. So, I was, when I saw the drawing and talking with the owner, the impression we had was they had, they owned the property all the way up to the road because of what the Planning Board approved to where the sign could go. And when I actually got out there to get all my measurements and tapes, I wanted clarification from him before I started digging any holes and doing what I had to do, and then he went at the plans and asked some more questions, and found out the property line was back further than what he was, he thought it was.
Okay, so, I may add, I believe that the owner felt, if it's a Planning Board approved it on the drawing they had, that it wasn't an issue for him to sign it. It wasn't until I was going to get the permit that I was, by what I always do, request it 10 foot sent back question, and then I started asking questions about the property line. Okay, whereabouts in front here is the property line? You know, how far from the road it would stop? And that's when he found there was a lot further back than what he, he thought. Right, so, to be clear here, you discovered the error, and you have brought this error to before the Board for clarification, is that right?
Yes.
Right, so, you, you discovered the mistake, you brought to the owner of the property, they acted in good faith, and they blocked this before the Board. Otherwise, you probably could have installed the sign, and nobody would have probably known, right?
That's correct. I could have put it where it was on the, the sign, if I presented, if I presented the site plan that was approved by the Planning Board, if I presented that to the building inspector and showed that, and showed it 10 feet back from the road, thinking that was a property line, that's what the direction I was going to go.
But, and I appreciate that. The reason I ask that question is, is marked for the understanding of the Board, that, you know, we've had other sign locations on Route 20 that exist, that never pulled permits, never requested anything, you know, and it was something that happened many, many, many years ago before the conference came in, that's not what I'm saying, but I'm just pointing out that I think if acting in good faith, we should make an effort to try to correct the situation and help it move forward, is, is all my, my thought here is. So, with that being said, do we have any of us present that would like to speak to this? All right, last is one more time, any of us, in case you have any technical difficulties? Okay, so, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, hearing none, seeing none. So, with the gathered information, Vice Chair, Maron, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I just, I just don't feel awful, a question that you asked, that, I'm not suggesting it wasn't answered, but I'll leave clarity, so, to the applicant, the original plan that was submitted, distinctly, did those plans indicate a 10-foot-from-the-road sign?
When I, when I went for the variance for this sign, if the question was asked, if I planned on going closer to the property line, so, to answer your question, I planned on going 10 feet from, from the road, which I thought was the property line, which was on the original site plan. And there was a question also at that last meeting, if I planned on going closer to the property line, but I didn't, it wasn't an issue from the plans that I had.
Understood, and, and what the Chairman had asked is, is, you know, based on the modification of the, the location. So, well, this is before us previously, for the time, and I apologize that I don't have those notes in front of me, but did we prove a 10-foot-on-the-road sign, is that correct? What was approved, I mean, the last one was relief of height and relief of size. But what was the intended distance from the road? So, that, that time, at that time was per, per, per 10 feet. Okay, so, so we've gone from, an approval from 10 feet from the road to 20 feet from the road, is that correct?
Actually, it'll be about 22 feet from the road. Okay.
Through the Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Maron, I don't want to.
Are you up for?
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt, Mr. Maron, I just want to read a couple of things that, I'm kind of taking back my original statement. So, the bylaw says location of structure, and it starts with, unless otherwise specified in this bylaw, no structure shall be located within the required yard area. So, and then you go to the sign bylaw, and it says, no sign shall be located any part closer than 10 feet from the traveled roadway. So, I would change my opinion that this would not be a variance but a special permit because the bylaw states in another section that signs is, can be located as long as they're at least 10 feet from the traveled roadway. It does say, or, it does say or side or rear, rear lot lines, it does not say front lot line.
Could I, could I make, could I ask you to make your comments? So, if it's, if it's a roadway and not the property line, I'm okay putting that sign there, even without a variance or a special permit, if I'm hearing you correctly, sir.
That is, that is how I, that's how I interpret that.
Mr. Chairman, after hearing Caleb read what he just read, I would, even though I mentioned earlier that we'd be looking at it as a variance, okay, I can understand now what Caleb is saying. I think the petitioner is well within his rights, and if that's what we're talking about, okay, for the, for the quote, lot property sign, as in his, as in his paperwork, if that's what we're talking about, then I think the petitioner is well within his rights to put the sign right there.
Could I make another comment? It was kind of interesting, now that he said this, maybe that's why whoever did the site plan put the sign where they did, because it was 10 feet from the roadway, but it's on state property, so I can't put it there, I have to move it back, and that's when I thought if there was a property line up the roadway, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, and so in follow-up, and I think you had thoughtful comments earlier, the applicant is certainly in good faith, trying to do the right thing, and we're physically looking at the numbers. Based on what Building Commissioner has suggested, and his interpretation of the bylaw what's before us, and then beyond that fact, the fact that the original application dropped 10 feet from the roadway, we are clearly beyond that now, 20 to 22, I think, is subjected from the roadway. If a special permit is not required here, then I would, I would make the humble suggestion that this application may not be necessary, and that we consider a return of fees.
Okay, did you complete your thought, Mr. Maron, or did we lose you? I'm not really sure, it's kind of a brawny stop.
Apparently, my mouth went ahead and moved me, so I won't, I won't drag you through all that, comments, I was in the thick of it. I'm reading for, just as just from the Building Commissioner, that this application may not require a variance or special permit, and that I would ask sort of a consideration that if this applicant is drawn, that we consider returning fees.
I appreciate that, sir, so let me go around the board, and then we can talk a little bit about it, I just want to make sure everybody has, is equally up to the conversation where we are at this point. So, Mr. Cuffey, I'm going to give a flow of you, sir, I think you probably have a feeling what's going on, and do you have any thoughts, do you want to add anything?
No, I feel the sign is okay, you know, like I said before, it's also 20 feet from the road, I'm okay.
Okay, Ms. Roach?
No, I, I agree. I think that if the language in the bylaw is road and not property line, then I would agree with Caleb's assessment that maybe the special permit actually is not needed. But I'm siding with the location of the sign.
Okay, Ms. Bush?
I agree with what everyone said, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, the reason, I just want to be clear, that just to know that Ms. Bush is the all that this evening, she won't be necessarily voting on anything, but I feel as though it's a valuable opportunity for her to just be trained and get involved in the conversation and, you know, keep her, keep people engaged. So, you know, honestly, I agree with everything that everyone said already here this evening. I think we, here's the thing, and I can tell you from experience on the board, and I think many other members will agree with me, that our sign bylaw is back, wide, and complex. And it's very easy to misinterpret or not understand, especially with all the highways, different roads, you know, between Route 20, 140, 1690, no, we don't have to talk about that. So, it's difficult to interpret and make sure you nail down the right thing. So, first of all, to the applicant, I appreciate the fact that you came forward, sought clarification, but I also have the authority on the expertise of the members of the Board and Caleb, that, yeah, I think we have an exercise in review, we can take it from there, but I don't, I think he's in good standing based on what is going on here, you know?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I, I just want to make sure that the applicant's aware that although it's, it's 20 feet from the traveled roadway today, Mr. State decided to widen that roadway and increase that, it could be as little as 2 feet from the traveled roadway. So, if at some point, at some point it caused a site distance problem, then the State may make them remove it.
And, you know, that's actually good to know, I do appreciate you bringing that up, too, just really for the applicant and all members of the Board. As you know, a couple of years ago, the State had mentioned that the Route 24, or from basically Schueneburg to probably somewhere around Chalton is one of the big central Massachusetts economic development opportunities that they see. So, as you can tell, the activity on Route 20, ever increasing. 20 ever increasing, uh, that we are probably see a widening of some of these lanes, especially when we talk about something else in a few minutes unrelated to the hearing. So, with that being said, I, I appreciate you making that publicly known, Caleb, and also on the record, so, thank you. Um, I mean, I think we discussed this enough, do I have a motion to oppose the public portion of the hearing?
Make a motion to oppose the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Maren, do I have a second?
Through the, through the chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, my, my recommendation would be that the applicant make a request to withdraw the application without prejudice.
I just didn't know if we discussed it further, I was gonna follow that, you know, what we usually do, but I, I have no problem with that, I just want to give the board the option, we do it.
It's completely up to the applicant, I just think that would, if, if it sounds like it's gonna go the way that it sounds, I would recommend a withdrawal.
And, and, so that we give the applicant an opportunity to be heard.
Right, I was gonna say, so let me suspend the motion then, uh, temporarily, and, uh, Mr. Serrano, do you have a request of us now, sir, after hearing all the information?
Uh, yes, I would like to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Excellent, thank you so much, so I have a motion on the floor from the applicant to withdraw without prejudice, and I also have a, um, a, a condition submitted by the Vice Chair to refund any fees associated with this to affect the application overall. So, with that being said, do I have a motion on, um, the current situation, on the six point here?
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I would do those in two separate votes, sir, I don't mean to make it any longer than it has to be, but, just for-
That's okay, all right, so we can take it as an A and B, I read what was there, uh, that apparently is on the floor, so the first motion would be, if we accept the applicant's request to withdraw, do I have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to accept the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Motion to disqualify, Mr. Cussey?
Yeah, I approve that.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Roach?
I approve.
Excellent, thank you, and the Chair, I also approve, and Part B of the request would be, uh, submitted earlier by Mr. Vice Chairman Maren, uh, to, to refund any fees associated with this application, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion as stated, to refund any fees collected for this application.
I call a second, also. Thank you, Mr. Cussey, do I have, Mr. Cussey?
I approve that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Roach?
I also approve.
And, uh, I also approve, uh, Chair Tejo, thank you. So, um, you're all set, Mr. Serrano, thank you very much for bringing this back to the board, uh, I'm sorry it didn't take, it took as long as it did to figure it out, but I'm glad it's clear, and, um, you know, good luck with everything down there, I appreciate you coming forward with this.
And once again, thank you, it's last time I've been in front of your board a couple times, always appreciate your professionalism, and I appreciate the way the vote inspector handled this and found the information on it, thank you very much.
Motion to close the hearing. Motion to close the hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Maren here with a second, Mr. Cussey?
Close.
Uh, Ms. Roach?
I approve.
Excellent, okay, so, um, a couple of business articles that we have here is, um, the first one is Henshaw Street, application for extension of a special permit, I'm quoting today, um, so, I won't read the entire letter, but we have a Chair, uh, letter here from Pro-Tech Energy Solutions, um, signed by the Vice President, and it's had the engineering development, basically stating that, um, you know, who called the biggest situation with the studies to national record, and it's not, it's not extension on the permit, um, the letter itself can be nonfiled, whatever you want to read, it's available, and we just have to do, we understand the lives around, um, Pro-Tech, and National Grid, giving a deep, uh, eighteen month FLO study. So, with that being said, do I have a motion to, to-
Through the chair.
-permit for, go ahead, sir.
The applicant is present, I don't know if they want to be heard.
Oh, I apologize, I realized, um, I thought this was gonna be, uh, um, just something to the board. No, I apologize, the applicant here, the people, the people, man, also you are?
Yes, sir, Adam Christie with Pro-Tech Energy, I'm the one that wrote the request letter, uh, Caleb, thank you for mentioning that I'm here, uh, the one thing that I would like to speak on, if I may, um, Chairman, is although I'm requesting a six-month extension in the letter, we have received additional information from National Grid a few weeks ago, and essentially, we got dragged into another six-month, more detailed study, and it just started, so this six-month extension would bring us to when they hope to complete the study, and as we've seen in the last eighteen months with National Grid on almost every solar project in Massachusetts, they haven't hit one single deadline that they said that they would, even if they were to conclude this in six months, it's gonna take them a couple of months to finish our system impact study, and issue us an interconnect service agreement. So, if I may, uh, if the board allows, I would respectfully like to request a twelve month extension, uh, on the special permit because of the new information that we received.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Caleb.
I believe the planning board has recently issued a twelve-month extension on the site plan as well, that the applicant could speak more to that.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you for bringing that up, the planning board, the site plan approval expires in March of this year, and it was subsequently extended twelve months, um, so it would be beneficial to us if, if it be concurrent twelve-month extensions, uh, if the Board will allow.
Okay, no, I'm glad you brought that information up, thank you very much, Building Commissioner, so, um, those types of things, um, knowing what the other boards are thinking and, and what they've moved on, things really helpful, I know for my confidence, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the other board members as well, uh, Vice Chairman Maren, your thoughts, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and so, um, I appreciate the information brought forward, and, um, I did read the brief, um, by Mr. Christie that was provided, um, so I have no concerns, and I, I would, um, I would ask the board to consider a twelve-month align with the planning board's, uh, timeframe, uh, I think it, um, was, uh, great that the applicant is here to be able to discuss not only that piece, but, um, the ongoing, um, anticipated timeline, uh, that, uh, he's having to work through, so, I have no, I have no concerns with the proposal, um, and I would, um, I would consider amending the application on the fly here to, uh, to extend it to twelve-month timeframe.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Cussey?
I am fine with that, also.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Cussey?
Yeah, I'm good with the twelve months.
Thank you, Ms. Roach?
I'll go, I'll bet, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Bush?
Yeah, I'm good with the twelve months.
Right, okay, I agree, um, so, yeah, there's always, we are, I can see the, uh, working towards trying to resolve these issues, and we have other, uh, you know, priorities and interests, especially with all the crazy things that are going on out there right now, we certainly have to work about, um, the people that are addressing our community as well, so, um, Caleb, do we have to make a formal vote, motion on this, or is this a, uh, an informal, because it's really not a hearing?
Through the chair, although it does need to be advertised, we would need a formal motion and a vote on the request.
Okay, I just want to be clear, because it wasn't a formal opening call hearing type thing, so with that being said, do I have a motion to extend the requested application of six months, uh, to an actual year in alignment with the planning board, uh, for the request of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I think the motion is stated, um, and, um, uh, through the, um, through the Building Commissioner, I don't know if we would need to, um, put language in the decision that speaks to, um, either amending the application or, uh, making it subject to a condition, but certainly aligning with the twelve-month extension.
Through the chair, the motion, the motion would just need to be a twelve-month extension from the original expiration date of the original decision.
Thank you, so, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would make the motion as stated by Building Commissioner.
I agree, thank you so much, do I have a second on that?
Oh, one second.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cussey?
I approve.
Thank you, Ms. Roach?
I approve.
Thank you, and the Chair approves, so good luck, I hope it works out for you, uh, please keep us posted, uh, for any other types of, uh, breakthroughs or developments that take place in the project.
Thank you, sir, and thank you everyone for your time, uh, I hope you all stay safe, use luck.
Okay, so-
Motion to close the hearing.
Uh, so, yeah, it wasn't, but, yeah, do I have a motion to close the hearing? It wasn't really, no, go ahead, okay.
Yes, and, and, Mr. Chairman, but I don't know that we actually opened the hearing for that.
Yeah, so, it was, this is on to other business, so, we were kinda in the gray area between, I don't know, we took a formal vote, but anyway, we're going on the one, uh, just to make sure, do I have any other, no more comments on the one Henshaw Street, so, uh, do I have a motion to close that out of discussion? Or can it close? Thank you, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cussey?
Close.
Ms. Roach?
Yes, I approve.
And the Chair closes, okay, uh, so, we have a letter of intent to sell, and I am going to spend a lot of time with Caleb on this, one, not a lot, but a couple minutes anyway, just to make sure we got all the floor that's going on, we have a chapter sixty-one land, Fifty Walkin' Street property summary, that we will all receive in our package here, dated January sixth, twenty twenty-one, um, describing how Fifty Walkin' Street is thirty point five acre parcel, zone industrial park, identified in the twenty nineteen map plan, in twenty seventeen economic development strategic plan, as a parcel for potential development, sheet map by the way, the abiding parcel, one ninety Washington Street, sometimes known as the dot property, which you probably are all familiar with, at one time or another it's, it's been before the board, um, was recently created by Eastland Partners, and has long been identified as a parcel for development, building areas like limited for several reasons, um, are likely to be accused of suffering, by the fact that the lot is a graded parcel, but also proving complex for development, but also seems to be some encroachment, as shown in map one below, by the abiding one for acres, mobile all mark, a survey remotely can necessarily determine any extent of encroachment, as you can see, uh, with the, um, attachments, uh, they give you a basic overview of what they're talking about, but, so, what I want to do is just to make sure that everybody at home understand what they're talking about, or at least on the record, and I'm gonna defer over to, um, the Building Commissioner, to give us an overview of the intent of this letter, if you could, sir.
Sure, so this is, this is just a notification to keep board members in the loop as to what's going on, um, sixty-one A land, um, the town has right of first refusal, so certain boards are required to be notified and take a vote, the ZBA isn't one of those boards, but I just wanted to inform everybody of what's going on, um, all town departments and committees have looked at this and do not see any need for this property due to the location on Route twenty and the complexity of developing the wetlands on the property, um, I can't say that the Open Space Committee and the Planning Board both voted to, um, not take action on the right of first refusal, and the Board of Select will be taking a vote on Monday, um, I do know that there have been talks with the developer about possibly donating some of the backland, which abuts the walking trails at Pappas, so I think it's, it should be a good thing, um, like I said, it's a really tough parcel to develop, and none of the town departments felt that it was worth the cost of developing this parcel with the location. Happy to answer.
So, I, right, so I did want to add to members of the board, too, if you recall here, the, um, one ninety Washington Street, Washington Street, uh, so also meant it's a dotment, owned property, that was, um, ended auction off in the last year or two, and, uh, the issue here is it's about forty to sixty foot below Route twenty grade, that really ends in a bowl of wetlands, pretty much, so the land, as Caleb has mentioned, is very, very challenging to develop, even for somebody that would invest that much money in the, the, um, managing all that water, and what they were allowed to do would be a super challenging investment, so I think that's the point, that if they have an interest in donating some of the land, then maybe making some of it usable somehow in the right, um, but again, so this is just informative for us, and correct, Caleb, because we're not really involved in this, if we need?
That's correct, the ZBA is not required to take a vote on this, um, I just wanted to inform you of it, um, I think the developer's intent is this parcel will make, make accessing one ninety Washington's much easier, um, that's not to say that they won't develop part of this parcel, but I think their, their main goal is to use it to access the other parcel.
Right, and that was one of the other things they talked about, was, um, you know, not being able to petition the state to open up that side of Route twenty, uh, as you know, the state has an enormous amount of restrictions, and it's incredibly restrictive to give anybody a, um, you know, a curragut basically on a highway like Route twenty, it's nearly impossible to do this, so, again, the addition of this property is to make the abiding property look more attractive to a developer too, so, uh, anyway, so, I, I want the board to be aware of that, I appreciate that, Caleb, thank you so much for including that, uh, I think really that's it, we have to accept the minutes of the meeting, from, um, those, what, in December, are we accepting those, or not ready yet?
Through the chair, we don't have any minutes for acceptance tonight.
Excellent, okay, that's fine, and we have, our next meeting is February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, I don't anticipate the, um, type of delivery changing between now and then, so it'll be a remote hearing again, um, and everything will be acceptable, and that's been all along, so, with that being said, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn? Excellent, thank you, Vice Chairman, do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, um, Mr. Cussey?
Close.
Thank you, Ms. Roach?
Yes, adjourned.
Thank you, and the Chair adjourned, so, good luck, stay safe everyone, we'll talk to you soon. Thank you. Thank you, thanks, bye.